Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome. We're citizens in the city of Portsmouth who was watching our public work session today. I want to thank everyone for joining us. Also, I want to thank our city staff for being present here to support the effort. I want to thank and acknowledge Dr. Coleman, who is our deputy city manager. Also, we have represented here our city attorney, Vonda Graham-Williams, and also our clerk, Ms. Deborah White. And I see we have our economic development director with us today, Mr. Brian Donahue. I want to thank everybody for being here. And so with that, we will go ahead and ask Ms. White to call the role. And then I'll present some opening remarks, and then turn the meeting over to the chair of the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission.
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant?
Present.
Dr. Dodson?
Here.
Mr. Hugel?
Present.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Mr. Tillich?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. And as I stated earlier, we're excited about the work that you all are doing at the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission. Really excited about this presentation that you're going to share with us so that we can get a better understanding of what you guys are doing and how we can help you to reach the goals that you set forward. Want to thank the chairman, Mr. Foster, for being here with us today. Well, who's the father? Oh, God.
That's okay.
Mayor Glover made a mistake again, so he'll make some in the future. I want to thank the chairwoman, Ms. Angelia Allen, for being here with us today. And would ask that she take the floor now and introduce her team and provide the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, city attorney, clerk. And I also would like to recognize Chris Goloson for the Port of Virginia. I'd like a roll call, please.
Ms. Allen?
Present.
Mr. Foster?
Present.
Mr. Hanson is absent.
Ms. McSwain?
Present.
Mr. Peterman is absent.
Mr. Rice?
Present.
And Mr. Barham?
Present.
Chair, you do have a call.
Thank you. For the public knowledge, the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission was created for Portsmouth by the General Assembly in 1954. We serve staggered five-year terms. Our powers include acquiring, owning, leasing, disposing of property, acquiring, constructing, developing and maintaining and operating worth, docks, and piers. We also have the power to borrow money, incur debt, and issue bonds, along with operating commercial, manufacturing, and governmental facilities. We also have the ability to sell, convey, or lease the same and condemn property for public use. So that is the purpose of the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Committee Commission. As you will see from your handouts, desired meeting outcomes, we're going to present our project and grant program review, our development site briefing. We're going to talk about the American Cruise Line, the Norfolk, the Newport News, the Southgate Annex of the shipyard, the Virginia Port Authority engagement, and identify action steps and action items and next steps. Before you, we have information on our project and grant review. Our PPIC job creation grant is locally funded. We equal, we provide new and expanding existing Portsmouth-based businesses in industrial and port-related industry sectors with financial assistance for creation of new positions that provide employees with living wages. The one-time grant of $500 per position for qualified positions earning at least 175% of the Virginia minimum wage, and $800 per position for qualified positions earning at least or above 200% of the Virginia minimum wage. The maximum award for that is $80,000. We have our Virginia Port Host Communities Revitalization Fund. It provides funding for strategic removal and redevelopment of vacant, underutilized, and deteriorated port-related properties in the five port host communities of Royal, Newport News, Norfolk, Portsmouth, and Richmond. It provides reimbursement up to 50% of project costs. The base award is $480,000. The maximum award is $1 million. And we will be going into depth about where we have provided those grants deeper in the presentation. We have the state-funded Commonwealth Development Opportunity Fund. It's a deal-closing fund to be employed at the governor's discretion to secure company location or expansion in Virginia. It's administered by the Virginia Economic Development Partnership. It serves as a final resource for Virginia in the face of serious competition from other states or countries. It requires a one-to-one local match. And lastly, additional state and funded federal grants include the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation, Rail Industrial Access Grant, the USDOT MARAD, Port and Infrastructure Development Program Grant, et cetera. So these are our recent projects and grant program review. With Linage Logistics, it was a $65 million investment. It was a Commonwealth Opportunity Grant Fund of $157,500 and PPIC $157,500. That will produce an approximate tax revenue of $812,000 per year, and it put in 84 jobs. Eunice at Wild Duck Lane was a $20 million investment. The port host grant was $140,000. The tax, the projected tax revenue is $250,000 per year, and that had 40 jobs. The BASF site on Progress Road was a port host community grant of $345,000, tax revenue of approximately $9,500 per year, 15 to 20 jobs with that project. Crofton Expansion on Harper Avenue, it was an $851,000 investment. The port host grant was $415,000, and tax revenue $10,000 per year. Uncertain about the jobs on that just as of yet. Norfolk and Portsmouth Beltline Railroad Raymont Logistics, that was a $6 million investment for phase one. The port host grant was $800,000. Tax revenue will be $75,000 per year with 10 to 15 jobs. And lastly, DeLong on 1 Harper Avenue was a $20.2 million investment for phase one. That grant was a $750,000 grant, tax revenue of approximately $250,000 per year with 15 to 20 jobs. So all in all, a total revenue per year is about $1.4 million with 180 new jobs. So there are a great deal of things happening. So now we're going into our development sites briefing. 3920 and 3930 Burton Point Road. Burton's Point Road is a development of 13-acre former Portsmouth Public Schools and EPA Superfund Site. It is property by purchase, by the purchasers, Stone Mount Financial Group. It is zoned industrial. The project is going to result in approximately 180,000 square foot industrial warehouse for distribution and logistics for manufacturing use. It requires completion of the city roadway improvements underway at Burton's Point Road now and planned at Victory Boulevard and Elm Avenue. The projected finalization of the sale is September 2025, with groundbreaking taking place September, taking place in 2026. The next one is 06 Street and 1603 7th Street. They are vacant 2.8-acre parcels formerly owned by PRHA and acquired by the PPIC in 2024. It is property zone special district. It's vacant public right-of-way and property assembled in 2024 to support future development. It's currently being marketed to the industrial development community. Desired uses could be a flexible office, warehouse, light manufacturing, research, development, or a data center. American Cruise Lines. So we've seen those cruise ships docked at High Street Landing. They're docking up to 15 times per year here during the spring and fall seasons as a port of call for the American Revolution cruise offerings. They typically last two nights, and it's approximately 105 to 120 passengers per ship. The American Cruise Lines has expressed a desire to increase its visits to 25 to 35 times a year. So that actually will greatly increase our tourism in our downtown corridor. They are talking to the city, and they're interested in connection to city water, supportive refuse removal, minor modifications to the seawall whalings for disembarkment and boarding, and a docking agreement. As you'll see from the photographs, the inside of the ship is very nice. So we have that opportunity to increase our tourism in our downtown corridor by double and making sure that we facilitate that relationship as best as possible. The next one is our Southgate Annex. PPIC has engaged with the Norfolk Naval Shipyard leadership for about utilization of approximately 16-acre Southgate Annex property on Burton's Point Road for economic development purposes through an enhanced use agreement. We're waiting for plans from the shipyard on future shipyard needs for that property. We have taken tours of that property, and there are some opportunities there. Yes, sir. How about I let y'all see what I'm talking about?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. So, Virginia Port Authority Engagement. The PPIC desires to be the lead entity for engagement and collaboration with the Virginia Port Authority on matters related to the future of the Virginia International Gateway and Portsmouth Marine Terminal. PPIC representatives will work with economic development staff to identify topics of interest and will attend VPA quarterly board meetings to remain informed, provide feedback to VPA officials on Portsmouth matters. Upcoming VPA meeting dates are July 29th and October 28th. Our next steps. We are asking for continued support from the City Council for pursuit of state and federal grant opportunities for our PPIC development sites at 3920, 3930 Burton Point Road, City Council's prioritization for improvements at Burton's Point Road, Elm Avenue, and Victory Boulevard. And when it comes to 06 Street, 1603 7th Street, PPIC to update City Council on future status of development. When it comes to the American Cruise Lines, City Council will support the seawall improvements to allow for increased dockings in Portsmouth. When it comes to the shipyard, Southgate Annex, PPIC to update the City Council on future opportunities for utilization of federal land. And last but not least, Virginia Port Authority engagement, we will act as a liaison to the VPA and update the City Council on port-related matters. We thank you for the opportunity to come before you to discuss opportunities where PPIC and the City Council can work together. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are there any questions for Madam Chair on what was just presented by Mr. Moody? So you have the floor.
Ms. Allen, thank you for the update. Very comprehensive.
Thank you, sir.
Couple of questions on the tax contribution. Is that all-inclusive of machine and tool tax, real estate tax, personal property tax?
So I did all-inclusive.
Okay, so that's all-inclusive. And also on the 180 projected estimated jobs, do we know the percentage of those jobs would actually go to Portsmouth residents?
I do not. But that's something I can try to gather as best as possible and return an answer to you.
Yeah, that would be good to know. And do we know the level of pay that those jobs will result in?
I will get that information as best as possible as they're willing to relieve it, release it.
And let's see, on the shipyard annexed properties, I know there was a tour of those properties, I want to say, gee, time flies, probably five, six, seven years ago. Is that, has the commission toured those facilities recently?
When was it that we went out there? Was it a year ago?
Year and a half ago.
Year and a half ago?
Okay, so it has been more recent than that because, as I recall, that property really offers a lot of opportunities as far as docking and
Absolutely.
deep water access. But I know the commander and Councilman Hugel can probably expound more on that. The commander, at that time, was very interested in hammering out some type of agreement lease, if you may. Is there any change in that, or has the change in leadership made that more likely or less likely?
I'll defer to Councilman Hugel for that.
So the shipyard is interested, but since the discussion that you mentioned, they're now engaged in their infrastructure optimization of the waterfront. And so because they're doing a kind of a makeover of the waterfront to make the waterfront ops more efficient, they use Southgate Annex to move stuff off of the waterfront, park it over there, do what needs to be done to the shipyard proper,
Right.
and then bring stuff back. And so all of those plans are still being created.
Right.
And so they don't know exactly how much of Southgate Annex they're going to need to use as swing space while they're doing their optimization. But we toured about a year and a half ago. They're keenly interested. Once they get their arms around what can be made available, because the way this agreement works, they don't get rid of the property. They basically lease the property to a private entity and get paid in service and kind. And the service and kind that they're interested in is upgrading the piers along that property that are, I don't know,
Elaborated.
at least 50 years old, maybe, maybe older than that.
Yeah, a lot of them in bad shape.
Yeah, and so it's waterfront, deep water waterfront property, so whoever's going to move into that property is going to have to upgrade the pier space anyway in order to be able to use it. So it's kind of service and kind that benefits the shipyard and the government in the long run and whoever works the deal with shipyard in the short term. So we were having pretty regular conversations, in fact, monthly, at our Military Affairs Committee meetings back when you were still council liaison there. Those have petered out while they're kind of figuring out what their optimization plan's going to look like and how they'll need to use Southgate Annex in the meantime.
Very good.
Would not have been that comprehensive.
One other question about the modifications that need to be made to the seawall to accommodate, you know, the docking and disembarking and what have you. Do we know, and maybe this question is to Mr. Coleman, do we have a cost estimate on what those modifications would be?
At this time, we do not have a cost estimate for that. But not, not, I don't think it's too tough to get because we're working on another project on the seawall that's currently contracted to get that barrier area fixed. So cost estimate at this time, we don't have, but we can get that for you.
Because I know there've been other people that pointed out that with the rebuilding of the seawall, there's, it's not ample accommodations to dock or disembark any passengers in the seawall. So that would be good information, and hopefully it's something we can do because it's not serving a lot of potential at this point other than a walking trail.
Councilman Hugel, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, thanks for saying that. So to follow up on the Vice Mayor's comment regarding the waterfront, I think the PPIC hope is that we factor all of those improvements into the long-term waterfront development. So right now, the kind of the boundary line that's drawn around the Crawford Bay area by EDA doesn't include North Landing, but there's been some discussions in the EDA about expanding the boundary to include North Landing in that project because the North Landing waterfront area, when it was redone, has now kind of convoluted our ability to put boats in there. So there's one area that we can go after as part of that waterfront development. The other end of the waterfront tied to the city complex, finding those permanent solutions as part of that waterfront development makes sense in the long term. I'll share with you that there's a short-term urgency to some of this because next June, we're going to have tall ships from Sail 250 visiting the waterfront.
My question was going to go.
And so I know our rep to Sail 250, Mr. Glagola, has already engaged the tall ships that are supposed to come to our waterfront to get details about what they're going to need in the way of accommodations to moor along our waterfront. So our mooring expert has taken a walk with some folks to figure out what can we do in a temporary way to perhaps modify the railing and provide the services that are going to be needed in the near term. But I think importantly, PPIC is highlighting to us, don't lose sight in the long term. Make sure that when we do the design work for the waterfront development, we include that kind of thinking because American Cruise Lines is an opportunity for tourism. And so, you know, being able to commit to them that we're interested in accommodating their needs so that they can spend more time on our waterfront is going to be good business for us.
And I know during op sale back in '06, we could accommodate the tall ships at that point in time before the renovation of the seawall.
Yeah. Well, there's a way to do it. Our mooring expert over there has kind of figured out what needs to be done. I always need to roll up our sleeves and get it done between now and next June.
With a sense of urgency, as you said.
With a little bit of urgency, yes. More urgent than the long-term waterfront development.
Right.
So I do have a question for the chair. It's about grant program funding. So I've been hanging around the PPIC for two and a half years now.
Every meeting.
I have never seen anyone ask the PPIC for a job creation grant. So we advertise that? Who do we advertise it to? How do they qualify to get it? Maybe we have a conversation in a PPIC meeting to talk about that job creation grant and figure out, how do we, how do we get that information out?
Right.
So that folks
Got a spider on you.
Oh, Jesus.
Yeah.
Nice.
Good job, Brian. And cover him up.
I didn't want it to get to Madam Chair.
This glass will be broken. If you go ahead and explain how it's been marketed.
Good evening, City Council and members of the PPIC. Thanks for the opportunity to respond to that and comment. The PPIC's Job Creation Grant is a local program that exists. It was created about two years ago. The reason for that is it kind of fills a gap in need where the state's job creation grant that exists through the Virginia Enterprise Zone Program would not cover certain industrial areas within the city. So we have a state grant that is typically utilized first because there's state money on the table for that. But we did identify some possible areas where there may be a need for covering the areas and businesses that aren't in that zone. So we specifically launched the program to capture those areas. You are correct, Councilman Hugel. We have not had an opportunity to utilize the program, but it is available. We do advertise it. We do that through our website and, you know, marketing publications that we distribute as well as various informational work sessions that we provide to the business community as well. So it is there. It's a resource, another tool in the toolbox when it is needed. It is there and available.
So I assume you know what businesses live in that zone that we could specifically reach out to?
It would be any business in the city that does not fall within the enterprise zone. So yes, we can identify those businesses directly. We've done some direct outreach, typically through our business retention efforts when we're meeting with the business. If they fall outside of the enterprise zone, that is something we bring up. It's something we bring up when they're in the enterprise zone as well. We just have the good fortune of using state dollars for that part of the program.
And the criteria, it's got to be port or industry, port-related?
It needs to be an industrial project.
The typical small business isn't going to qualify?
A small business could qualify. There is a threshold, I believe. You need to create at least five jobs once you are meeting that. There is a threshold that you would have to achieve to qualify.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to throw first, Councilman Dodson?
Thank you, sir. I'm not in a hurry, though. But y'all, take it for a moment.
Okay, sure.
Because he raised his hand.
So the updates that we're doing for the festival coming up, can I get some detail on the, with the small boat, updates on that might be for the North Landing? Is there some information available?
I don't, I'm not sure.
So the short answer is no.
Yeah.
The urgent goal for Sail 250 is to address the
Tall ships.
Tall ships.
Yeah.
There's nothing that I'm aware of that any of us are working on to address small boats coming into North Landing. Doesn't mean we can't.
A lot of them come
But nobody's working on it right now.
A lot of them come with the tall ships. And so I was wondering, for tourism purposes, if we had thought about addressing the small boat needs, which the North Landing seemed like an ideal place to put some pilings, so...
Yeah, when it had the docks. I think that's what they're still trying to figure out, the placement of everything. And then, like you were saying, they're got to figure out the heights of everything, where they're going to go, the depths.
We're not going to make this tall sail.
Still working on it in Norfolk, too. So, I mean, it's coming along.
Okay. I'm sorry, Chairman. I should have addressed that to you. I apologize.
Yeah, it's fine. Work as a team.
All right, thank you. I had to catch some of this through technology. You were going over the project and grant program review and kind of identifying the job creation for some of these investments that have happened. And I heard Vice Mayor Moody ask the question of how many of those jobs are going to, I think you said Portsmouth residents, Vice Mayor, is that correct? When we work with these businesses through their investment in the port industrial community, do we, I asked this from DeLong when they did their groundbreaking about what their jobs, you know, required, and how can our residents, our students that are coming out of school be best prepared for, to take some of those jobs? And one of the things they said was, hey, if they are OSHA certified, that kind of gives them a leg up. And so I wonder, do we have, I kind of see here a gap a little bit between just knowing what those requirements are and pushing that information out to our citizens so that they can be, kind of have a leg up on making sure they're job-ready, job-trained for some of these jobs that are coming to the port. Have we identified, or do we have a sort of, like, collaboration with the schools, our school board member, U Fire School Board member, with the schools and also with our workforce development to kind of have a development to kind of have a pipeline from what we're training our citizens, what trainings are available to our citizens to these jobs that are coming through the investment in the port?
Not specifically through PPIC, but the workforce development program down in economic development.
They have the linkage, okay.
They have that information and they offer those opportunities for training.
And their communication with these companies that are investing
Yes, that's in economic development.
Okay, all right, great.
Sure, if you'd like to add on?
Yes, to your question, we are in communication with these businesses. In fact, any company that our office is engaged with, one of the conversations that we are having with them is what their staffing requirements are
Okay.
So that we can support their hiring and the priority being hiring a Portsmouth resident. In order to be able to put them in a position to do that, we need to have an adequate pipeline
Right.
Of talent that is skilled and ready to fill those positions. So through the Portsmouth at Work Program, we're working to do that. So we'll coordinate, collaborate with the business to identify what their hiring needs are. If there are special certifications or skills or trades that are required, we'll begin working with our partners, including Time Water Community College, Portsmouth Public Schools, Hamt Row's Workforce Council, the maritime community, to begin training Portsmouth residents to fill those jobs when they become available. So the goal is to be prepared to have a Portsmouth resident ready to fill the position. While we can't require a company to hire a Portsmouth resident, what we can do is be prepared.
Put our citizens in the best position, okay. And then I was trying to listen, but since I'm a visual person, so for the Burton Point, wait, where is that?
Burton Point Road.
Yes.
Development Site Briefing?
The purchaser, Stonemont Financial Group, are they, so they're developing this, but we don't know what manufacturer and logistics company will be operating out of this space yet. Is that correct?
Somewhat. They've purchased, they're in the process of purchasing the property. They're still going through their due diligence to make sure that everything is fine for what they need to do and to make sure that the site is, the site is primed to set up whatever it is that they're looking to set up.
Okay.
So there's still some wiggle room in there.
Okay.
So that's not a fine tune.
Yet. And I ask that because Councilman Dodson and I, we, being new, we did our tour of the port and one of the things that, you know, learning is that, you know, other surrounding cities because of their available land use, they've been heavily going into the logistics distribution. And Portsmouth, we, you know, we don't have that much land to work with, but I didn't know if this land was going to serve the purpose of our logistic distribution so that we can kind of be competitive with those surrounding cities such as Norfolk and so forth.
It's taken us a while to sell this property.
Okay, okay, so that's a possibility for this land.
Possibly.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Bryant, may we have the floor?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Allen, for the information.
Well, don't cancel me.
Very excited about the, very excited about the cruise line opportunity. We see them frequently coming through downtown. So I know some of you were able to tour the ships and go aboard and have some conversation with the American Cruise Line folks. So aside from these accommodation requests, I'm wondering if there was just anything else that came up in terms of tourism that we should be on the lookout for to
I personally was not part of that discussion, but just from an outside looking in, we should be looking at ways to have certain activities for those people getting off of those ships to do in our city of Portsmouth, not just in our downtown corridor, but throughout our city.
Right.
As you all know, we have a vibrant city where there's things going on in every corridor. We want to make sure that they're staying in Portsmouth as much as possible utilizing our businesses. It's our time to shine and make ourselves a destination, even if they're not on the cruise ship, to come back to Portsmouth. So I think working with your tourism department and figuring out what can we do to place Portsmouth in its best shining light position for those cruise ships to come in, will not only carry over from American Cruise Line, but when we see the Carnival Cruises over in Norfolk, getting them to come to Portsmouth as well.
Yeah, that's a great point to add, very much. Yeah, I often see tourists walking through downtown, but there's also usually a bus that I assume is taking tourists to other, to other cities. But that's a very good point, that itineraries perhaps through the city and different neighborhoods of the city.
Itineraries, places to go to.
Places to eat.
Definitely. I'm at the Renaissance, so I'm often telling people where to go at the, in Portsmouth to eat. There's plenty of places beyond just our downtown corridors that deserve some spotlight too.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, it looks like the Portsmouth Port Industrial Commission is doing some good work and I'm excited about the progress that you all are making, recognizing that, you know, I always joke my colleagues in the other cities, my peers, that if I had their land, then it'd be a whole different deal. But at the end of the day, I think we're doing very good with what we have and I think we're creating real opportunities. I know from just your example with the American Cruise Line, I have talked to those folks and met with some of the folks coming off of the boat and I frequently get that, this is a beautiful place. This is an amazing town. And so you guys hear it and it is. And so we're moving in the right direction. Thank you all for your service and support of the effort in our city. Thank you, Madam Chair. I know you've been working a lot and many of you have on many boards and commissions. And we just want to let you know that it is appreciated. We could not be the city that we desire to be without you all putting in the work on the front end. You're our goodwill ambassadors and we appreciate that. So if there are no other questions or comments for the good of the order, keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
That concludes, I think that was the only public work session item, so that concludes our public work meeting portion. We do have a need to go into a closed session, so I would ask at this point that Vice Mayor Moody, if you could read the closed meeting motion.
I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A7 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual probable litigation where such consultation and open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigating posture of the public body specifically regarding the City of Portsmouth versus Griff's Restaurant and Sports Lounge and JDF Holdings LLC, Portsmouth Circuit Court Case Number CL 25001466-00 and the City of Portsmouth versus Swinson Restaurant Corporation and All, Portsmouth Circuit Court Case Number CL 25001599-00.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Second.
You have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Hugo?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillich?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are in a closed meeting. We'll take a few minutes break.
These council members certify that to best of his or her knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered, and the closed meeting just concluded.
Second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Dodson?
I reluctantly vote yes because of my objection to our deviancy.
Mr. Hugo?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillich?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Call me. Yes, sir. Let me just hear after Mrs. Dodson.